Starting your week.
So we'll call the village board meeting for Monday, May 6, 2024 to order. Jim, you're the kind of sergeant at arms.
Well, tonight I am.
Yeah, for the pledge of allegiance.
Sure. Like to introduce you to Trevor Nada, student of mine at Crafton High. Up and coming young, real smart kid, and he accompanied Lisa and I to one of the mid-marine dinners. Trevor, the floor is yours.
Where do you want him?
Just say it right from there and go ahead and lead her off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic, which is fair, one nation, one God, and this is all.
Thank you, Trevor. Excellent job. You didn't even need a piece of paper to read it.
I only had the print.
Very good. All right, Ms.
Thank you, Trevor.
Ms. Katie, please note the roll call, trustees, department heads, and organizations that are present. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. For approval, a motion and a second for the approval of the April 16th, 2024 village board meeting, and also to file the March 26th, 2024 planning commission meetings as presented.
Motion to approve and file.
I'll second it.
Wait a second. The leader of the tiger, I'm going with the tiger. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any changes, additions, deletion, suggestions? Mr. Harbeck.
And he proved he was at the meeting, were you?
He was cool.
For the plan?
Yeah, he was.
Yeah.
Even the, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're set.
For backdate and plan.
Long time. Okay, motion and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. Anybody wish to speak to the board on an agenda or a non-agenda item? Mr. Harbeck, please stand. Of course, your name and address. We know.
Bill Harbeck, 907 17th Ave, Crafton. At the last meeting, Dan, you said we could be flexible on whether we could speak when the topic comes up. I'd like to, I have a couple of comments on the term limits. If I can, I'd like to wait until the discussion is done.
Can't do that. We're not going to do that. I would like that if you have a comment, I'd like for you to make it.
Okay, well, I thought that's what you said. So anyway, I have a couple of observations about the proposed term limits. And I will have the board to know. I'm not making these comments because Lisa is my wife. She's the only person that would even be close to the term limit. My comments have nothing to do with that. It's just the general proposition about term limits, especially with an organization or group like this. I think term limits in this setting can be a really bad idea. Because you lose people arbitrarily who have the knowledge, the history, and the experience, and the comfort in taking on issues. And, you know, there's always a getting your feet wet period of time. She's got her feet wet, believe me. I know some of the others do have your feet wet too, but many new phases. And that's the second part of this. Term limits make sense if you've got a stagnant group, and it's always the same people, and you want some fresh blood. You have seven trustees. The next person in line with the most tenure is Mr. Miller with less than five years. And other than that, you've got two people that have been there for a year, one brand-new one. So almost half the board is a year or less. So you're getting the fresh blood and fresh ideas. I don't think it's a good idea to boot somebody just because of the term limit idea. I think the village board got it right in 2008, said, let the electors decide if they want to impose term limits. And that's when they got rid of them at that point. I think that was the right decision.
Thank you. Anything else, Bill?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate the comment. Let's go to item number five, business as presented by the president. Looking for a motion and a second for trustee board committee commission appointments that were revised. We just had to make a couple of revisions. We were missing some folks out there. So we will look for a motion and a second.
I'll watch. I'll second.
All right, any comment on that from you, Amy?
No.
Mary Pat? No? Anyone else?
I just, so you said that we just added you, Dan, on those other two committees. What's added?
Dave. We had Dave, and then we also added you to be on the ad hoc committee, if you see that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, those were just some oversights that we had as we go through and clean things up.
Oh, Davis, Davis, you're a publicist.
Yes, just to give you a heads up that the town ad hoc committee hasn't met in 11 years. And when I called Lester, I said, hey, Lester, you've got three people running the ad hoc committee. He said, oh, my God, I never realized that. Do we need to keep that going? Not really sure we need to keep it going, but certainly there may be some issues with the joint fire department that we're looking at, and potentially with the library board that may need to pull us together again. I think it's probably a good idea to have that for a minute.
And of course, as they voted last time, I'm going to vote no on finance side.
Okay.
I felt that that was something that should be.
As am I.
Okay, very good. Motion and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we've got two opposed. Katie, you have it? Good. Okay, we'll look at 2024 citizen member board committee commission and appointments. You have a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right.
Okay, Lisa, you were second last time, so I'm going to take you first, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right, Lisa or Jim, any comment?
I just want to make sure that you know that our new appointee for Board of Public Works, Jeremy, is employed by JT Engineering.
Okay.
So I would assume that would mean if we discuss any, or if we use JT Engineering, he will have to abstain.
Yes, we have the same issues with some of the folks on other committees that we know who they are. They're going to be involved.
Yeah, I just want to mention.
Okay, Jim?
I'm good.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Paul, it's your turn. Let's go to 2023 audit presentation and report.
Sure. Any requirement is that we have a audit of our financials. I'll just turn right over to Paul France, the partner at Baker Tilly, who is the firm that does our.
Thanks, Paul. And my name is Paul France. In your packet, you should have a couple-page summary that I'll use to summarize the audit outcomes. I believe also in your packet are the electronic PDF versions of the report, but I'm going to be speaking from this one that summarizes. And our audit objective was to express an opinion as of December 31st, 2023. We've done so. We've issued an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean bill of health. What that tells you is that the annual comprehensive financial report has all necessary disclosures within it, that there are no material misstatements, and that all accounting principles have been adopted as necessary and applied consistently year over year. So ultimately, this is the outcome you're looking to hear when you hire an external auditor. It's the highest level assurance that I can give you. Moving along in the package of some financial highlights to point out, I won't spend a ton of time diving into them, but certainly happy to answer any questions if you do have any. But starting in the first column, the general fund had just over $9.6 million of revenue, just over $9.4 million of expenditures. So we added the fund balance by about $432,000. So the general fund ended on December 31st of '23 with just a little under $3.47 million. Now, that fund balance is broken into a number of different categories to help you understand what's available and what are the true reserves in the fund. First category is non-spendable, just under $100,000. That's activity cash that's left that just hasn't had an income statement effect yet, but will in future years, so it's not available. When you put together the 2024 budget, you have a planned use of about $495,000 of fund balance. So we assign that out of the category since we're planning to spend it in '24, and that leaves you an unassigned fund balance of about $2.9 million. I take that $2.9 million and I divide it by your annual budget to come up with a percentage. Look for that percentage. It should be somewhere between 10% to 25%. That, something in that range, if not over, tells me it's a healthy reserve. You guys come in at 30%, so strong financial position in the general fund. Down at the bottom of the page, I give you a glimpse at the '23 budget plan. You had planned to use $457,000 of fund balance. Ultimately, you added to fund balance. You had a positive swing of almost $900,000, again, adding $432,000. The four other columns up at top are just, again, other fund activity. So the debt service fund houses the village's debt payments throughout the year. There is a little bit of fund balance in there. It's restricted for paying back principal and interest of about $178,000. Your capital project fund has a little over $1.8 million in it. Again, that is earmarked for capital project purposes. And then two, three is a major fund, so we list that out separately. And that fund is operating with an operating deficit currently. Last column is just a bunch of other small funds that don't meet the qualifications to be listed separately in the financial report, but they can be found in detail in the back of the annual financial report. On the next page, they hand out a quick look at the utilities. I'll point you to two lines in here to look at. Would be the third line down, operating income, both water and sewer operated at an income level last year, meaning that the revenues that were brought in covered the related operating costs of the utility. Doesn't factor in depreciation or future costs of infrastructure that needs to be replaced. Management is very proactive in evaluating the related rates that factor into the operating revenues, and so no concerns to note in that. The other lines I'll point to are at the bottom of the page, just the operating cash that's available unrestricted and restricted in each of the utilities. About $1.7 million in total in water and just under $4.4 million in sewer. The next page, just a quick look at long-term debt of the village. Combined between village and utility debt, there's about $22.7 million of GEO debt. You do have the ability to borrow up to 5% of your equalized value, which is about $100 million. So good amount of capacity available to you. The percentage there is not a concern. You know, using 23%, you're on the low end for a growing community, so no concerns there to note. The remainder of the items that are listed in there after the revenue bonds, which are utility revenue debt, are items that are determined by actuarial basis or third-party type transactions that'll be paid back on a pay-as-you-go basis, nothing that has an amortization schedule that you need to be budgeting in for. Any questions on the financial highlights? If not, I got a few closing remarks.
Much obliged with closing. Sounds good. I will go through and see if I have a question.
Thank you. Audit process went very smooth. Paul and Monica are fantastic to work with. It is a true audit. We come in, receive everything that we need upfront, have limited to no journal entries throughout the audit process, which is not seen very often in the governmental accounting industry. I have clients where I'll go out and make 50 to 100 journal entries. We're making less than five. Most years, zero here. So it's a huge accomplishment and speaks to the good financial data that you have at your fingertips throughout the year to be making the decisions that you need to. So again, it's a privilege to work with those two. We do also issue an audit results letter in there. It houses some required communication that we need to have with you as the governing body. It also lists out what our audit process is. I'll just point out a couple of things to note. We list out the accounting estimates. We determined that they're all clear, neutral, and non-biased, meaning that they're appropriate to be within the financial statements. We had no difficulties in performing the audit, as I alluded to earlier. I do list out in there any non-test services that we provide as the auditor, meaning we assist in preparing the financial statements, or we do come across the journal entry. At the end of the day, in order for me to be able to give the opinion that I mentioned at the beginning of this, I have to be able to determine that I and Baker Tilly are independent from the village, which I'm happy to say we are, and happy to say that you received the high-sol assurance that I can provide. So with that, I'll pause and let you ask any questions to me out of me.
Very good. I'll open up to the board to ask some questions. Jim?
I don't have a question. I would just say thank you, and this is very well done. And a special thank you to Paul and Monica.
Thank you, Jim. Lisa?
Sure, you mentioned the journal entries. Are those something that explain other type of entries that might need extra information? You said we have very few with some people.
Yeah, so I mean, ultimately, when we begin the audit process, we'll take a download of your accounting software. As we analyze that throughout the audit process, we can identify things that might be wrong in that software. That software is what drives the financial information that you would review on a monthly basis. When we come in at other entities, we have to make a lot of correcting entries to get the information to be accounted for appropriately. That doesn't happen here.
Okay.
Very few.
So that would be a, if it's under one account, it may actually be going to a different.
Exactly, yeah.
I just have a question. How long has the village used Baker Tilly?
Only, I've done before. I started in 2009. I was in charge at that point, and then have false followed me in my career, and now I get to sign the report, so.
Any other questions here? Come on, I know you got them. And you know, the good thing is, is you didn't.
No, well, thank you. Short, sweet, hopefully hit high notes.
We appreciate that. So with that, I'll look for a motion and a second to accept the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending December 31st, 2023.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Very good. Any other further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Just thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Monica. Thanks, everyone.
All right, in due respect to Bill, thank you very much for your comments. Our next discussion is going to be about village board and term limits. Do you know that we have had multiple requests for this amongst board members just to at least review this and to have this brought to a discussion? So as Mr. Harbeck referred to back in 2008, there was a decision to rescind the original term limits. The term limits, Jesse, if I'm right, I think that was three terms?
Ninety-five, the village adopted a charter ordinance that established term limits to serve four consecutive two-year terms or eight years.
Okay, so eight years at that time, and it is a charter ordinance. And what a charter ordinance is, it's an ordinance that was there really to start when we started our charter as village. And given that, in order for an ordinance to be changed like that, it would have to be a vote of two-thirds of the village board to change that. And at that point in time, it would take five of the board members to vote that. If, in fact, that that does take place, and we are not going to do that tonight. Tonight is primarily a discussion to see where we go with this. It's important for us to know that if this does get voted on and it is accepted, it will take a 60-day waiting period, as all charter ordinances are, where during that time, 7% of the electorate could, in fact, sign a petition to have it brought to referendum. So it's not an easy decision that we would make. It would be a decision that, of course, requires a great deal of thought. And you know, the whole thing here, this is not really meant to be punitive towards anybody. So the fact of the matter is, is that we've heard some calls in the community. They have some trustees who represent people in the community who felt that they wanted this brought up for discussion. So it's just important that, you know, we go through, we take a look at this and see if there's consensus to move towards doing this and directing our village staff to move forward. Jesse, did I miss anything?
Nope, you really hit the highlights. Ninety-five, we established term limits. In 2008, we rescinded term limits. It's a charter ordinance. We touched on those aspects. So really, it's for the village board to discuss, and if there's any direction to staff, we may so offer.
And I just really want to try to keep the staff out of this because it's not staff decision. It's not been staff-driven. It wasn't driven by Mike. It's just basically a request from multiple trustees to bring this to the table so we can discuss. So with that in mind, anybody want to start with a discussion on why they think this is a good idea? Why it's not a good idea? Jim?
Yes, so you got some concerns or questions from multiple citizens. Is that where this started?
So I'm, well, wait, I'm going to say I have some. However, I have to look at the fact that other trustees have brought this to me.
Okay, and my only concern is, like, it's not broke. Why should we fix it? I think Lisa being on the board with all the experience she has, there's some real value there that all of a sudden she wouldn't be on the board anymore, that we'd lose that experience.
But let me stop you there. There's not been any decision on what the time would be, what the time limit would be, when it would start, or when it would. That's up for the board to decide. You know, I think the thing is, is that this could be a decision made by the board if this is a 10-year term. However, we're not going to look at it and say that I don't think we're in good standing, nor do I, what I want to see, that all of a sudden we say, by the way, you passed this, and Lisa, you're going to be done in a term. Would you think that there could be some reasonable discussion here that we would look to say, like, when does this actually go into effect if we're going to do this?
With existing board members, right? Like a ramp of a cost, I think.
Yes, if I may, Mr. President, legal counsel and I were just briefly discussing. Both of us are firmly of the opinion, we would have to solidify this with a little bit of research. Both of us are firmly of the opinion, it would be anything set with regards to term limits. So let's play this out. This moves forward. Charter ordinance is adopted. It's 60 days. It goes active. It's prospective. It's out. It's not any sort of a look-back period. It would start the date of becoming effective. So just something to keep in mind.
However, back in 2008, I think they did, I was, I'm sorry, 19?
Well, they passed in 95, but it was effective in 96 or 97.
Correctly. So it was prospective. It was prospective, but a very short. Right, but I'm indicating, you know, as your administrator was saying, I don't, I'd have to look at, I don't think it could be retroactive. I think it would be prospective, affecting members now and into the future. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Anybody else? Does that make sense? Jim, you done?
Yeah.
Do we have a handle on our neighbors? Do they have term limits?
Cedarburg did establish term limits for their mayor, for sure. I'm not sure if it applies to the entire council.
It does.
And otherwise, in my travels, one municipality in which I served began discussions and quickly abandoned them. The only other examples that I have come across, I believe, the city of Watertown and Fond du Lac. Otherwise, very, very few have term limits.
Mary Pat?
I've run into a couple of organizations recently that do not have order limits or term limits. And Lisa, none of this is directed to you. Yeah. Just, we got to make that very clear. But the organizations that I've been working with are wishing that they had term limits for many reasons. Number one, it brings in new ideas, new energy, and new perspectives when you've got new players or new trustees. It keeps people enthusiastic, and it avoids burnout. Now that we have citizens joining our committees, it's important for them to know that there is a potential that they could be on the board when someone's term limit comes up, that they don't go for reelection. Everybody would know the day they start what their term limit would be down the road. And it provides a respectful and efficient mechanism for the exit of ineffective or even troublesome board members. And that's what I'm experiencing with a couple of organizations that I've been working with. The downside is you lose expertise in organizational memory. That's the downside would be. I think it's something we have to review, something we have to look at. I think in 95 or 2008, they were having problems getting board members. We just had six people running for three positions. That's pretty impressive. I don't think we have that issue these days. And that's my opinion.
Jim, I just want to thank Mr. Harbeck for making his comments here at the meeting tonight, and for Jim as well for his comment, but I think it's always good to have new blood on the board. Yes, we have six fairly new board members on here. Again, nothing personal against you, Lisa, but again, this, it would take whatever number of years that we decide, or if we decided to, it would be from that point is my understanding. So it wouldn't be like, hey, you've been on here eight years. Well, if it's 10-year term, you got two years left. I don't see that, how that would work. It would be from 10 years and then moving forward. So it's not like we'd be saying, okay, you're out next year or a year after. But I just think that even though we have new blood on here now, I think it's always good to get some new blood on the board, to get some new ideas. The village is growing. And we may not have the best ideas in five years from now. I mean, somebody new could come in here and say, you know what, hey, I've got some ideas. But I hope I never thought of that. If we have the same seven people sitting here for the next 20 years, I don't know that Crafton can continue to grow. So that's my thoughts. Amy?
Yeah, I can just base it on the two big organizations that I belong to. And I, for the record, I value Lisa's opinion. I learned a lot from Lisa working with her over the years. So again, this is nothing to do with you. I'm just looking at the two organizations that I belong to. Stars and Strikes on a Flight, I could only serve for 10 years on the board, and we have board limits with the American Legion as well. So I think that that also promotes increased involvement, keeps us safe. We're in a good position now, but we don't know who might come on board in the future that, you know, keeps our work, keeps our village and our board safe, and I think it maintains a healthy balance of power.
Yes?
Paul? I see the value in term limits in organizations where I would call it a stagnant membership. Because the village of Crafton continues to grow, and it is such a large represented body, and we are, as village trustees, we represent the interests of all the people of the village as opposed to a city situation where you would have automatic districts, where you're actually living in a specific district and representing those people. We represent all the people. So my personal opinion is, in this particular elected office, the voters would have the most powerful way of saying yes or no to anybody as far as, because you're running for an election every two years. And because of that, because of that two years, yes, I see, I see what you're saying, Mary Pat, about the, if you have someone that's a troublesome person on the organization. But I also value the public opinion that they would say that person is troublesome, and they're not going in the direction that we feel we need to go. And in my experience with the campaigning and listening to people, if they see something going not the direction that they go, and they would specifically know that this individual doesn't agree with them, they would say, okay, we like your ideas, but we don't like their ideas. And so, like you said, with our, with our election, we had this past election with six people running. There were a lot of choices. So I think that, you know, as long as that continues, then I'm just happy going. The voters have the ultimate power to say yes or no to village trustees.
And to clarify on the troublesome, we've had the benefit of not having that at this point, but we don't know what the future holds. That's why I.
Sure. So I appreciate everything everybody has said, and I think what I liked to hear tonight is that everybody is spoken up, and that hasn't been the case in the past a lot of times with our board. We haven't had a lot of people with a lot of opinions. So this is amazing that everybody is speaking up with an opinion. I guess I would say, again, I don't want to be your dead horse, but, you know, being on for as long as I have, we've probably only had maybe twice that we've had more than three people run. And it's been tight, almost to the point of, oh, gosh, you know, we're going to have enough people to even put their hat up, right? So that was a concern of mine. And, you know, I guess for those of us who are on and keep running, I think it's because we're passionate, and we want to try to get Crafton to where we think it's good. And I agree. I think it's great to have new people and new ideas. I think that we have a good team now. So I can see both points. Um, so I, I can see both points. Um, I worry that if we cut people off after a certain amount of time, that we let some of those ideas go and we might get people on the board that may not be as invested, you know, may say, oh, we know so and so is going off and so let's just, you know, put our investment. So, uh, that's my.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, I really like to bring, bring your point here. Again, I thank Lisa for her service. I think in many ways she's sane and insane for wanting to be in this role for this long. But, uh, we're glad she's sane enough to keep running. It's, it's, it's great to have you on board. I, I think the, I think the thing is, is, you know, I look back on, uh, whether people want to run for election versus be appointed is kind of different. We, we've had two positions that we've appointed in the last, uh, in the last four years and we had six, five and six people come forward to do that because it's the easy way of getting on the board. Um, we do see a great deal more of people involved in our committees. Again, Phil, you're, you're on a committee and, and it's so great to have you on that committee. That's where people get interested and when we put the ad in on Facebook for, um, committee members, we had eight people who contact, who filled out applications. In addition, we had a couple of people who were on the board come forward and say, geez, I'd like to be on the second board. So we're not running out of people that are going to run and I can't look back past and say, things are always going to be that way. Nor can I say, we look to the future and say that we're not going to have interest. We're in a very tight political arena right now and people are either happy or unhappy. And the unhappy people tend to want to run and to be able to see if they can make a change within government. So, um, I see the benefits for term limits. Um, I think as long as it's reasonable, frankly, I would not want to be in this position more than five terms, either as a trustee or a village president. I just don't think it's good for the village. Uh, and I don't think it's just good for the, um, it, it's really good for the health of the village. So with that, um, I just want to get a general consensus on where we're going here. I think I know and see, um, uh, do we want to bring this, have the board do, uh, have, um, uh, staff do a little more investigation on this? And we bring this back and, and have a vote on it? Just looking for some consensus.
I think it's worth at least looking into. I'm not saying that we, you know, we're, we would move forward, but I think a little more discovery, I think would be good.
I agree with that.
No.
Yes.
Three? No.
I'm good.
Okay, I'm, I'm saying yes, because I just do like to see, do like to see, uh, additional discussion, as we said. Um, Amy?
Can we find out what are the results? I know we don't see a bird, but like four, that one.
Okay, very good. So Jesse, I think you got your marching orders on that and we'll bring that back in the future. I think maybe it's a good idea, we just let it settle for a bit and come back in a couple, maybe in a month or two.
Oh, I was going to say ten, twenty years.
I'm not voting on that.
Well, thank you very much for all of your, um, input. I greatly appreciate it and I think that's, you know, that's what I really like to see is, um, people speak up and talk. Should be good debate here and, and you know, I'm always happy to see that take place. Let's go into the report of the planning commission here. Um, looks like we have some ordinances to approve. I, Jesse, would that go over to Jessica?
Would, I prefer to direct it all.
Yep, hey, Jessica.
So the first item is an ordinance amending the planning development for St. Paul Lutheran Church and School at, um, at Washington Street. And this was for the, uh, due edition at their school. Um, they, they are zoned, planned unit development, and so to add to that development, uh, we do need to do an amendment to the PUD. The plan commission approved both the, um, PUD based on bill of action as well as the site plan and the conditional use for that new edition.
Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion in the second to amend the PUD plan unit development for St. Paul Lutheran Church and School at seven one Washington Street and allow twenty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-seven square foot school addition, indoor institutional as conditional use that would be approved.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Um, anybody need to be recused from this vote, given that they're members or a part of the, the decision-making process at St. Paul's? No, we got.
I'm a member also, but it's up to you.
Yeah, mine's up to you.
I don't, yeah, I've given opinions that, you know, we could have, there's no peculiar financial benefit. Probably gonna actually, potentially be a financial detriment for some members, but, uh, so I, I don't know that it's a, that it's an organic cost.
I think you can trust people, but if you trust, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, motion in the second here. Anybody wish to discuss this? Okay, then I'm going to trust everybody who needs to recuse, recuses. Those who don't, don't. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here he is, very good. Uh, Jessica, let's talk about chapter twenty-one floodplain zoning.
Yes, so we recently updated the floodplain zoning maps for all of Ozaki County. Uh, the, the DNR and FEMA worked on those. And so as the next step in the process, FEMA, the DNR is requiring all communities in Ozaki County to update our floodplain ordinance. Um, there are no significant changes really, um, to the content of the ordinance, um, as there were no significant changes to our floodplain maps. Um, there were just two items of discussion at the, the plan commission regarding the, the floodplain ordinance. One was a recommendation to plan commission that we include provisions related to Act one seventy-five. And this is related to what's kind of referred to as the fifty percent rule. So right now, under DNR regulations, for, um, structures within the floodplain, they can't, um, uh, improve the structure more than fifty percent of the assessed value of the property over the life of the structure. It's basically intended to make these non-conforming structures in floodplains go away. Um, the DNR has changed their opinion on, on these types of structures. And so, um, the model, model ordinance and the, the ordinance for the village board, um, does include provisions that, uh, uh, a property owner can either continue to meet the, continue to follow the fifty percent rule or they can meet more stringent standards for construction, um, and bring the portion of the structure out of the floodplain that includes habitable rooms. Um, and then they would not be subject to the fifty percent. So it's a little bit, um, in the weeds, uh, but the plan commission wanted to, uh, include or have an ordinance that included that flexibility, um, and more permissive standards for these structures. We have very few of them. Um, I've been here eleven year, almost eleven years, and I've never dealt with the structure of the floodplain, um, besides basketball courts and decks and things like that. Um, I am trying to work with DNR to get count, um, and get the location of, of those structures in Grafton so that I have that information. Second item that is new, uh, to Grafton at least, is called the community rating system, a CRS program. So, um, this is a program that Grafton hasn't been involved in, in the past, but, um, is a, is a longstanding program with DNR. It basically allows communities, um, to lower, uh, to, to provide a, a discount to floodplain insurance, um, property owners. If we, um, participate in the program and meet certain program goals and criteria. Um, such things as obviously we have to have an adopted floodplain ordinance, uh, other, um, requirement, other posting, making sure information is posted on our website and about floodplain and, and floodplain issues. So some things are very straightforward and easy. Um, other things would, would be more challenging and take more staff time to, to, uh, meet. But it is a free program, it's just my time and, and staff's time and again, meeting the, the various criteria that, that are available. So, and it could range from a, uh, you know, a five or a ten percent discount, you know, all the way up to thirty percent if we reach that kind of highest level of, of participation in the program. So, like mission always re, also recommended that, um, staff pursue that to the extent possible.
Very good, thank you, Jessica. Um, so looking, uh, for a motion in the second, um, uh, ordinance repealing and adopting village of Grafton chapter twenty-one floodplain zoning be approved?
I'm all for it. I'll second, oh, sorry.
Also. Okay, um, all right, Amy and Andrew, any questions? Anybody else on board? All right, rolling right through this. So no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Uh, resolution three, or, uh, or, uh, Glenn and Stonewall Farms condominium final flat addendum?
Yes, so this is just the next phase of, um, the, the Glenn condos. It's for four, four unit buildings south of Rose and then, uh, three duplexes in the far southeast corner of the development.
Very good. Need a motion in a second for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hey, very good. Any discussion by you two?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. President, we need a call for.
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, I don't think we need an offer, is it?
Resolution. For a resolution.
We do, okay, so I'll take yours as an offer, okay? Motion?
Yep, motion. Second.
Second. Okay, I'll put motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Could I just ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, it's, so this is the final flat, right, Jessica?
It's the, it's the addendum number three final flat.
Final flat, okay.
So if, so for some reason, the county decided that for condo flats, they're called addendums for, for whatever reason, and in subdivisions, they are just called final flat phases. So, but it is the final flat or addendum number three, otherwise known as phase number four.
And is the, is this project just four phases or is it more than that?
No, we were about, I would say, two thirds completed in the, in the, sorry, it's not a subdivision, in the Glenn condo development. Okay, we have the whole, like, east, or to the western half, south of Rose condo buildings to go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Jesse, your ministry.
Absolutely, I'd actually like to start with a little bit more, uh, positive financial news on behalf of the village. Uh, earlier today, we received word that once again, the village has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, Budget Presentation Award. Um, this is the thirty-first consecutive year in which the village has been, um, independently reviewed and awarded recognition on behalf of its budget work. Um, that said, uh, moving into the next item here, our Parks Department is in the process of establishing a first year of operation for one of our new amenities, the splash pad, as we start opening up, um, seasonal amenities, um, you know, like the pool, getting that ready, getting the splash pad ready. Um, right now, the initial thought for operations of the splash pad will be limited between eleven AM and seven PM from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Uh, we're going to actually monitor, um, use or activity at the site is through water usage. There is a water meter, as water flows through, builds water flows through the amenity and, uh, it is on a timer. Um, so it'll be activated, you play on splash pad, it will shut off and either they react, kids playing will reactivate or move on. Um, so we will monitor, uh, engage the activity on the site through water usage and we will adjust operations accordingly. But, uh, for the first year, that is our general plan or approach to utilization of that new amenity. Um, lastly, on behalf of the Police Department, um, happy to report, K-9 Maverick, uh, recently assisted the Mequon Police Department with the search and apprehension of a fugitive down in Mequon. Um, this has been, uh, um, a new part of our police operation here in Grafton that is really, uh, paying dividends. Uh, not only from the operations standpoint, as I pointed out, but also just general, um, uh, public perception and opportunity and outreach. Um, so long and short, um, the K-9 unit is really, um, coming into its own and doing a good job all the way around. So kudos to, um, the K-9, uh, uh, unit and the police department as a whole. That's what I have for the evening.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, moving on to licenses, there are no operator's license to approve at this time. We'll look to approve, uh, the expansion premise, uh, for liquor license establishment for distillery. Jesse, you want to talk a little bit about?
Sure, this is for a specific event at the stillery, um, roses and roses benefiting Mel's charity on May nineteenth between the hours of two PM and six PM. In essence, the, um, stillery who holds a liquor license is asking for an expansion of premise. Utilize the outdoor space, um, commonly referred to as Paramount Plaza as part of the, um, fundraising event. And because it is outside of the establishment, uh, will need to be cordoned off in accordance with state law. But, uh, um, this expansion of premise would also be, uh, required for, uh, to be approved in order for them to actually hold the, um, fundraising events. So, um, we have done expansion of premise, uh, for other establishments, uh, within the village, uh, notably the, um, uh, I believe it is the bridge, uh, that will utilize a portion of the village-owned parking area for an expansion of premise. Um, um, Super Bowl party, if I recall correctly. Um, so again, similar type situation in this particular case, it is the stillery looking to utilize, um, a portion of Paramount Plaza for a benefit, uh, for Mel's charity.
All right, so I'll be looking for a motion, uh, to approve the expansion of premise for the liquor license establishment for the stillery thirteen oh four twelve Avenue for the date of May nineteen, twenty twenty-four from two PM to six PM.
I like the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, Lisa and Dave, any questions at all? We've done this before.
I, I do have a question, so.
I just want to make sure they have.
Okay, that's right.
Okay, Andrew?
Um, I'm assuming that the area that's marked off on the map is actually fenced off, is that correct?
It'll be cordoned off in some fashion. Um, we're working with them how to specifically do that, whether it be with, um, uh, uh, not wayneers, but, uh, like games or ropes or something like that. It does have to be a designated area by state law, and so basically the clerks and or police department will be approving that. Um, what the event.
And they won't have any outside liquor sales and it's just an area to move into, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Katie, if I could have you. Yeah, the attachment, the attachment of the state.
They, they will not be selling the alcohol out there, but they will have the ability, the consumers will have the ability to consume out there.
Further discussion?
Can I make a comment? I think when they've done this in the past, they've had raffles out there. So there was, I, I don't feel want to call that sales, but they did have raffles outside too, just as fundraisers, so.
So I think in, in, in the letter, yeah, the letter that came up here is they're, they're announcing they don't have sales, they'll just say that they're not serving alcohol or food outside.
Right, so if that raffle would be a sealed container, it would not be an open container provided to.
Okay. Second already done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one carries. Very good, let's go to report of bills, uh, looking for an approval of village, uh, expenses, expenditures for seven hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, I did see one question go back. Any other questions?
Oh, I, I have one on that. Well, Jesse, the, the DPW's got a truck that we leased that I saw on your response today.
Uh, yeah, it's a utilities back truck.
Yeah.
Yep.
How does that differ from the PD?
Because it's almost more of a straight payment, uh, uh, arrangement or a financing arrangement versus the police department where we are leasing it and those lease values roll into when we change over. This particular, um, difference is the fact that we can either trade it in at the end or keep it and just simply pay out any small remaining balance. So it's a different type of structure where it's almost more of a payment plan versus, uh, leasing because we can only own the back truck at the end of the voyage. So it's, it's a bit different that way.
Can we own the police vehicle after three-year lease, whatever it's, whatever our leases are? Can we, can we turn around and buy that police vehicle?
Technically, we could, yes, but the program is structured where we, the most advantage to the village is actually rolling that value back into, trading it in and rolling that value into a future lease of a police squad, which keeps the payments low. Um, this is, um, the back truck is again, more of a straight financing where you have your costs, it's broken out over five years and it's called a lease, or it's actually almost more of a financing.
So in reality, if in fact Chief wanted to keep one of those vehicles, he could actually go back to Enterprise and say, how much is a cent?
He could, we could buy it out, but then we lose that trade-in value towards any sort of future police stuff.
Uh, but you should have, if you called in Enterprise now, you should have a back end, we should know what that vehicle's going to cost in a year or two. They should have a figure for it.
I'm sure we could get that.
Anything else? Enough. Very good, any other questions? Okay, we have a question in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, we convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen eighty-five one E for real estate competitive bargaining matters, eleven Broad Street, one one thirteen Seventeenth Avenue, sixteen thirty-four Washington Street, sixteen thirty-eight Washington Street. I have a motion in second.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Great. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll convene to closed session.
Hi, Monica, thank you very much.
Trevor, thanks again for coming.